Good evening and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Regular Session Meeting for Thursday, September 19th, 7:30 PM. Just a reminder, a recording device will be used during this meeting. Let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody. Just wanted to talk about public comment and open it up for the Rules of Conduct of Public Comment established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. So I'll open it up right now to public comment for non-agenda items. Seeing none in the audience, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and we'll go on to our public hearing with the township solicitor, Tom Ostie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry to interrupt, just as a point of order. Hud, are you, did we skip Hud on there?
We have the, we have the hearing first and then Hud would be after that.
Well, then I'm out of line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a hearing that is required by the Open Space Lands Acquisition and Preservation Act, and the act requires the township to conduct a public hearing prior to acquiring interest in open space. In other words, in most cases, prior to spending money to require an open space easement. The purpose of the hearing is to disclose what the township intends to do and to disclose the proposed open space benefits that would come from the acquisition and to provide an opportunity for members of the public to present comments about the proposed acquisition.
And do we have to talk- Yeah, so I'm gonna announce real quick, just to interrupt you. Jason Winters, the other township supervisor is joining us via conference call, so that's what the ding was that you just heard. So, Jason, he's just discussing the hearing here on the Hess property, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So we have up on the screen the property that's subject to the hearing. It's owned by Albert J. and Catherine D. Hess Estate. It's at 580 Buck Road. It's UPI number 30-6-17. It's about eighteen and a half acres. It's on the north side of Buck Road, about 350 feet west of the intersection of Buck Road, Rock Raymond Road, and Governor's Circle. The total acreage of the proposed easement area is 16.62 acres. There are two, which I know it's difficult to see from out there, but there are two protection areas. One's called a highest protection area. It's labeled on the plan as HPA, and that's basically a wooded area and a steeply sloped area on the property. And then the other area is called a standard protection area, and that's about eleven and a half acres, and that's more of a meadow area. There's an existing house in the front of the property adjacent to Buck Road. That's on a 1.99 acre tract, which will be excluded from the easement. In other words, the homestead and the existing buildings there will not be subject to the conservation easement. The easement is being coordinated with Natural Lands Trust. They obtained an easement, I'm sorry, an appraisal to determine the value of the easement. That appraisal came back at $14,000 an acre for the value of basically, said another way, taking away the development rights from the property. So the total easement cost is $232,400. That's $14,000 an acre multiplied by the total acreage to be eased. The easement document has already been drafted. It's under review by the township, but it's more or less a standard Natural Lands Trust easement. Natural Lands Trust would hold the easement, and the township and perhaps the county of Chester will be beneficiaries of the easement. Natural Lands Trust will be in charge of enforcing the easement if there are any problems in the future. The proposed open space benefits are protection of the natural habitat, specifically aquatic habitats, protection of scenic views, and the expansion of a network of protected areas. This property is adjacent to over 200 acres of eased land owned by the Brandywine Conservancy or under easement by the Brandywine Conservancy. So this will add to that protected area. The township proposes to contribute a total, well, actually not to exceed, $267,500 toward the purchase of the easement and also to pay the transactional costs associated with putting the deal together, including the appraisal, survey, legal descriptions, those kinds of things, and the cost of settlement. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to open the floor to any public comment or any questions anyone might have about the proposed acquisition.
And I'm assuming we're gonna go off the record for this, for this part of the hearing anyway, right?
Yeah. This is just being done in the minute, so there's actually no court report or any of that.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any, any comments on this? Or any questions, I should say, also? Seeing none.
We can then close the hearing, and the board could now consider the adoption of Resolution Number 10 of 2019, which basically authorizes the acquisition of the open space easement, the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $267,500, as I described, and also authorizes the proper township officials to sign the conservation easement and any old documents necessary to close the deal.
I'll make a motion. We adopt Resolution 10 of 2019.
Supervisor Winters, do you have any comment?
Nope. I'm good. I'm okay with it.
Okay. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we're gonna close this hearing and go back on the record for, for Bonsville Mill Park Update Parking Plan.
If I may just do it while we're, before we get too far away from it. I, as many of you know, I've been involved in the open space program since its inception here in the township, and I just wanna thank the family, 'cause I see some of them are here, for, for this conservation easement, 'cause I think it expands a very significantly conserved area of the township, and I know it's a property that was identified early on for, by the open space committee, and so I'm very glad to see that it's finally come to fruition. Thank you.
Yeah, I will, I will agree with that as well. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Volts.
Evening, Mr. Scrivener.
How are you?
Members of the board, I'm fine, and administrators. I was here, I was here before you in June, and I almost fell for that premature introduction this time again, too, Mr. Rev. Tribe, but you made me sit down again, so I've learned my lesson to wait for you to call me. Thank you very much. Is this working tonight? Or don't we need it? Oh, no, it's up there already.
It would be my preference that we use the scanned versions, because if I toggle to any other inputs, I may lose the ability for Supervisor Winters to be heard.
I, yeah, I don't want that. So, we in the Bonsville Mill, being proactive, last time I presented a low-tech version of what we hope our parking plan to be like for the next two years. If we get our second round of grants, we will be building a parking lot to the southern portion of this or to the right of this photograph. This was taken in the winter. However, we do have the butterfly garden there just to the top where it says exit. That's the butterfly garden now, so we wanted to properly orient everyone. And the reason we're doing this is, next spring, we should have dirt and plants in the ground. We hope to be having classes. We have some this fall, but their registrations are about 15 to 20. We're hoping there's no parking issues, but we'll find out this Saturday and next. But I've talked to some residents across the street who are very much in favor of getting organized, so to speak. I know two of the landlords, and they've looked at this plan and endorsed it, except for the following, where you see the road to the bottom, not the bottom, where the road arcs has those vehicles pointing towards it. Trying to give Mr. Winters an idea of where this might be. We wanna push that back as far as we can with your permission and also with Mr. Van Lu, and create some parking along the road there for those larger vehicles, those with trailers, those who may have an RV, we're not even sure, because they're the kinds of vehicles that block the ingress and egress here. That has created a problem in the past. We'd also like to create one entrance, which is at the leftmost portion of this photograph, and have an exit on the right nearest the sign and the butterfly garden. The sight view there is much better, and if we're gonna be having larger vehicles and buses turning, it's actually better to have them come in from the west and exit at the east. So this would yield approximately 18 parking spaces inside the arc and about four or five, or maybe it's only four, along the roadway. Those individuals, we don't wanna have a fence there. We want people to be, from across the street, to be able to access their vehicles without having to go through anything. We're hoping to have, and this is all within our budget, bumper stops acquired. We're gonna try it and see how it works next spring with your permission. We're working with Mr. Van Lu right now to get Pendot to give us permission to put up some signs, "Slow Park Entrance." But the idea here is to create some semblance of proper parking and eliminate what has been in the past, but not this year, thank God, so for a little bit of misunderstanding of the ownership and usage and all of that. And I think from my perspective, certainly we want the residents from across the street to be able to park there, it's their land, but they've been doing it for years. On the other hand, we want guests of the park to be able to come in and use it without having to go elsewhere. Until we get the other parking lot in, this is it. So, just wanna be proactive here. This is a much better photograph than last time. I think if you're willing to endorse it, we can move ahead. If not, any more time, that's fine. Six, seven more months won't, won't hurt us.
A couple of things that just pop out. One, so it's definitely going to be an entrance and egress, as stated, not, not dual on both sides?
It is now, and it creates a problem when people park up near the entrance sign, and that's why we wanna have it organized. This is a concept plan. It's up for the board to endorse it, and, and working maybe with the chief and with Mr. Van Lu, is it a good idea or not? We think it's a good idea, but we're asking for your input.
Okay, then the next question was, I'm just assuming this is a synchronized stamping of cars parked-
Virtual parking.
Because, because the reason, I was gonna say, if you are pulling in forward, it looks to be the back end of the car is against the, the, the stream bed, and the front end is towards the parking lot. If you were pulling in on the, on the-
I take no credit or no-
Okay, all right. And then the last thing that came to my mind immediately was, I, I'm assuming you're talking pretty much between entrance white dot number two and exit white dot number two-
Yes.
-is where you were thinking about putting longer trailers and-
Yes.
And if that were the case, then I would say, the only other thing that popped into my mind is if these cars pulled up too far, which you just said, bumper blocks or guardrail, that was my thoughts.
Yeah, that's why we need some assistance with the chief and Mr. Van Lu or the board itself. What is a proper width, you know, is it eight feet, six feet from the roadway? And then, you know, how many cars could we legitimately fit in there without creating a problem? Bumper blocks are great. We don't wanna paint any lines. We just wanna see how it goes.
Yeah, I think the state is gonna give you a hard time about putting longer vehicles on that bend there, just because I think that that's going to be a problem, and that's the only thing that comes to my mind looking at this plan right now for, for what you have to work with.
We'll find out.
And if you're talking about RVs, you mentioned RVs. They have to be, that's gonna have to be at least eight feet wide, if not more, so.
Well, we're talking about only at road edge?
Yeah.
Well, as I said, I don't think Pendot would allow-
I don't think Pendot's gonna allow that, Hud, only because it's gonna be blocking sight distance.
Okay.
And I think it's like 120 feet of sight distance is what the minimum is.
It's amazing how good it is by the exit sign there. You can exit, when you pull out, you can see all the way back up to Bonsville Road and Hadfield Road, and opposite, you know, is pretty good, not as good as the other. But, you know, I think it deserves a look, and, yeah, whatever Pendot comes up with, it's their road. I just wanna be, have some idea when I go back to the committee. This is something that, you know, it could work. That's basically where we are. But I wanted to share something with you, a bit more organized and formal than last time.
Yeah, I, I mean, if it does come to fruition, that this is the, the, you know, the overall map, so to speak, I would say, and Pendot won't allow the, the parking parallel to, to the road, then I would say it might even benefit us to put guardrail up instead of bumper blocks, because that, that might be a problem with cars even, some cars have longer front ends, and if they inch out and it-
Yep.
-encroaches the roadway, it might be a problem for us.
If you see that red dot there near the exit sign, actually, it's a green area with a red dot, that's a telephone pole, and I think Mr. Van Lu or maybe Scott has reached out to Pico to see if that can't be moved. There are two other poles that could handle the lines there, we believe, and that's kind of superfluous at this point.
Okay.
Would just lead to somebody bashing their car into the-
I mean, for what you have to work with, it, it seems to me the best use of it.
Okay. And we'll-
And I heard you say that you're not planning to stripe it, so.
No, you know, we gotta work this through first. I think this is going to be, hopefully, a long-term solution, but we certainly wanna test it out first, see how it goes, get the residents on board with it, residents, tenants, and owners first, and then if everybody seems to like it, then come back to you.
Well, good luck with getting people to park up to a bumper stop, curb stop. They can't seem to get it between lines when they're painted with lines, so I thought.
Between, between the top of the curb on the green line-
Yeah.
-and along the roadway, do you know how much distance that is?
I do not.
Any idea?
No. We'll get a, we'll get one of those wheels on it, I guess, figure that out. But somebody actually did, I don't know if it was Jim Ledrew, he's the one that came up with the photograph, but somebody actually did, did the distances for us. But I'll get them to you.
But have any cars?
Well, we're hoping to get 20 into the spaces there. It's kinda tight. I think there's 19 shown there. I wouldn't certainly keep a car down there by the entrance.
Do you know what the distance of the gravel lot is, the width of that lot?
I do not, not as I stand here tonight. But we'll get those harder numbers for you, and maybe Mr. Van Lu or somebody can help me out with that, just so I make sure. I mean, I know the township ordinance is with regard to parking spaces. I'm not sure we wanna go there with this right yet, but we wanna be compliant with that, too, at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the minutes of previous meetings, Board of Supervisors, September 5th, 2019.
Move that they be approved and submitted.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurers' Report, may I?
Aye.
Thank you. Bank account balances as of September 19th, 2019 are as follows. General fund checking, $2,169,022. General fund investment, $918,037. State fund, $365,448.52. Referendum open space, $2,799,514.71. Open space, $774,932.77. Traffic impact, $1,635,651.89. And there are a total of 114 checks in need of approval for the general fund, three for the state fund, and nine for the open space fund. And I also wanted to report that for the month of August, there were 10 right-to-know requests received and completed, with a total of 1,880 pages of response records provided, and $507.6 of legal expenses were incurred since the last business meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's take a minute to see that the finances are in order.
[inaudible]
Okay.
Oh, the healthcare, yeah.
I don't know why.
Ah, the one toward the best.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, the, the one that was supposed to be applied to the castle fight.
I don't know.
I forgot to tell you that, I guess.
[coughs]
Get queued up.
No, I do not.
I'll make a motion that we approve the disbursements as requested.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're gonna move on now to the Township Managers' Report.
Thank you. Excuse me. The Western Chester County Council of Governments Route 322 Corridor Committee is scheduled to make a presentation to County Administrator Robert Kegel on Wednesday, September the 25th. The presentation will summarize the work the committee has done to outline roadway improvements along the 322 corridor from the Lancaster County line to the Route 30 bypass interchange. Mr. Van Lu and I have been members of that committee. As a matter of fact, we were members of the original committee that met with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, which generated a report that was issued in February of 2010, and that's where several of the recommendations that we're proposing to the county commissioners actually came from. After we meet with Mr. Kegel, we'll hopefully be able to present information to the county commissioners at one of their morning meetings. We've been receiving several complaints about the spotted lanternfly that's invaded the township. It started out in Berks County, has, has worked its way south, as well in other, as in other parts of Chester County. Penn State and Bucknell University have been working on a fungus-based material that will eradicate this pest, as well as the larvae, larvae that they lay for hatching for the following year. The lanternfly does not survive the winter, but they lay the eggs, and the eggs will supposedly create more problems next year. I did speak with gentlemen from the Penn State Extension Service, West Chester, their West Chester office, this afternoon. We'll post some information on the website regarding liquid pesticides that can be applied now to treat for this pest and the trees that they invade, which are mostly the, something called Tree of Heaven, which is also known as Alliantis, and various fruit trees. And Luke just reminded me that next, what is that, Monday?
Next Monday.
Next Monday, the 23rd of September, starting at 6:30 here in our meeting hall, Representative Otten is presenting something on the spotted lanternfly. So we'd invite people to, to attend that information session. And as I'm sure most of you know, construction on the intersection improvements to Horseshoe Pike, Ballinger Road, and Warren Lane, and the Maple View Development is continuing and it's on schedule. Currently, they're working on installation of storm sewer facilities, and those are expected to be completed by the end of September. Ballinger Road, from the intersection to the first dwelling on the roadway, which is 131 Ballinger Road, will be closed beginning on Monday, September the 30th, to all traffic. All traffic from any of the dwellings that access Ballinger Road will be south toward East Reeseville Road, I think in the next week. The contractor will be posting detour signs, which basically will detour everyone south on Ballinger Road, east on East Reeseville, north on Bonsville Road, and then, of course, that brings you back to about 322. The closure is expected to continue until the reconstruction of that portion of Ballinger Road's been completed, which at this point is expected to be completed by Friday, October 25th. That, of course, is weather-dependent. And again, detour will be posted along Ballinger, East Reeseville, Bonsville, and Horseshoe Pike. During a site meeting that we participated in on September 4th, it was discovered that the relocation of utility poles along the north side of Horseshoe Pike might be delayed due to miscommunication between Verizon, which was supposed to install and remove the poles, and Pico. I spoke with our Pico government liaison the following day, September 5th, and he assured me that this issue had already been discussed the previous day, and also assured me that the work of moving the utility lines from the existing utility poles to the new poles, which have already been installed, would be scheduled and occur starting at the end of October. So it'll be, it'll push back the, probably the final paving or construction work and paving for about a week to 10 days. We're hoping that that'll happen a little quicker. Depends on how quickly the Pico teams that were sent south to deal with the storm recovery from Hurricane Dorian, we're hoping that they return earlier than expected, primarily because the damage was not as significant as they thought it was gonna be. So we expect that this late delay may push the project completion back to early November.
That's all I have. Thank you very much. You're welcome. We'll go to the Assistant Township Managers' Report, Luke.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As is my custom, I'd like to start my report with some events that have been arranged by the volunteers on the few committees that I have the pleasure of serving as staff liaison to. First up is Parks and Recreation's Fall Harvest Festival. This is the second annual one of these events. The first one was a smashing success. It begins at noon on October 13th. It begins with a children's costume parade, and also at this event are pumpkin painting, rides, scarecrow building, food trucks, music, face painting, and other games. I encourage everyone to attend. It's a great time in the community park. I also have three events from our Bonsville Mill Committee, and I'm excited to say these are the first three events. They happen to be adult education programs that are sponsored by the Downingtown Area Recreation Consortium that will be in Building A, the, the first building to get limited occupancy of the stabilized structures over in Bonsville Mill. The first program over there, they're all nature-related. The first program over there is Beekeeping 101, which will be on September 21st at 9:00 AM. That's this Saturday. Also this Saturday is a program on monarch butterfly migration. And then in a week from Saturday, on September 28th, there is a program on monarchs and milkweed, their preferred plant. All of these, as I mentioned, are Downingtown Area Recreation Consortium events, and so information about attending can be found on the DARC website. Third committee with activity in the next month here, the Historical Commission will be hosting its second of three Fall Speaker Series. This one features Speaker Doug- This one features Speaker Doug Miller, and the subject will be William Penn and the Lenape Indians. That event is on October 20th at 3:30 p.m. It's free and open, it's in this very room, I hope everyone can join us for that. Next up, an update on the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee met for the second time this morning. Among the items of business were the election of officers, which had been tabled from the first meeting, and, and hearing the budget requests from the various department heads. The Budget Committee has extended an invitation to members of this board to attend their advertised October 23rd meeting, which will be at 8:00 a.m. That is advertised, so if, at that, by the time they have their third meeting, the Budget Committee is diving into the delicate balancing act. And we'd certainly appreciate board members' input at that time. And lastly, this evening, I have an update on the 2020 census programs that the township is participating in. The first of these is the local update of Census Addresses, or LUCA. This project is now complete. This involved cross-referencing our records of occupied housing units against the federal records to identify houses that may not have been counted. We had completed this late last year, but we have now received feedback from the Census Bureau on our identified parcels. They have approved 74 added addresses and 33 corrected addresses to their mailing list. And given that the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors has calculated that each missed resident can be worth up to $2,900 in state and federal share revenue and grant funding, I think it's a very wonderful thing that we've been able to identify some houses that might have been missed. I will say that they declined to delete nine addresses that I suggested, but I'm not gonna lose any sleep over that. If they wanna spend a stamp mailing a questionnaire to a stormwater basin, I'm fine with it. It's kinda wasteful, but they gotta take my word for it, no one lives there. The second program that we're working on for the census is the new construction program. And this program is the last-ditch effort to make sure they have an accurate count. And in a rapidly growing community like ours, it's just as important. This project involves anticipating those houses that are likely to receive occupancy permits before March of 2020. I'm working with our excellent permits team to identify properties in all stages from application, but prior to receiving occupancy permits to report that same data to the Census Bureau. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I will say one thing, I attended a breakfast meeting this morning sponsored by TMAC, the Transportation Management Association of Chester County. And Tim Phelps, their executive director, mentioned that the, not only is the census important on their local, on our local level with grant funding, but it's also very important on a county and state level because we're talking about billions of dollars in federal monies that can be lost from an insufficient count for road projects, bridge projects, and things like that. So it's very important on not only our scale, but-
Across the board.
Across the board.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go on to the Building Inspector's Report.
For the month of August, there were a total of 30 building permits issued, two zoning permits issued. 13 occupancy permits were issued, 98 permits were, I'm sorry, inspections were completed. We were back up this month with the number of failed inspections to 31. Total fees collected by the Building Department, $20,945,04, respectfully submitted, Niran King Building and Code Secretary.
Thank you. Matt, for the Roadmaster's Report.
On Monday, the 16th, our contractor, Mecca Constructors, started milling and base repair on Hopewell Road due to the amount of commuter traffic that goes down Hopewell Road. They were scheduled to start at 9:00 a.m. in the morning and stop at 3:00. Working six hours per day has put them behind schedule. Today and tomorrow, I gave them permission to close the road at 7:00 a.m. And although this was an inconvenience for commuters, it was necessary to keep the project on schedule and the workers safe. It became very dangerous for the workers to remain on the road while the road was open. And I would like to remind motorists to slow down in the work zones. Our job is dangerous enough without cars whizzing by. Hopewell Road will be completed tomorrow. It would have been completed today, but the delays caused an extra day in the project. And then next week, we will be milling and base repair East Fisherville Road. A curb will be installed tomorrow on Zin Road. And next week, they will be milling and base repair, I did say on East Fisherville, no, I'm sorry. They will be paving Zin Road, which is from East Reeseville Road to the Edfield Road. And the curb will be installed from East, East Fisherville, I'm sorry, East Reeseville to the entrance of the Apple Cross Country Club. In February of this year, I presented an RFP for engineering and design for a new maintenance garage located adjacent to the existing salt shed. We were planning for a five-bay garage and an addition to the salt shed. During the February meeting, the board tabled the decision on moving forward with the RFP. And I've included the RFP with the, with my report. And I respectfully request the board's permission to move forward with the RFP by selecting engineering firms to provide cost estimates for the engineering and design of the building. Today, we sold the 98 GMC to Newland Township's Road Department. The total sale price was $7,500, which you had approved at a previous meeting. And the last thing I have is, earlier this year, I announced that the Road Department won the Build a Better Mous trap competition, which was awarded during the PSAT's conference this spring in Hershey. This entry was sent to a national competition, and last week, we were notified that we took first place in the competition. Yesterday, Derek, Kyle, and I were interviewed by the Federal Highway Administration, and we were asked many questions about the project, design, how it was built. We spent probably an hour on the phone with the Federal Highway Administration. And this, or October 3rd, there will be a webinar with the Federal Highway Administration, where we'll further describe the project, and it's an honor for the department to receive this award.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. The only, the only action item on here was the request for the RFP. I will say, I did get an email this morning from the Budget Committee asking to have an invitation, obviously, for their October 23rd meeting, but also to discuss any bigger projects coming before we make a decision on those. Out of the, out of the courtesy to them, I personally would like to hold off until 23rd till we talk to them. But obviously Supervisor Winters and Fisher can have a say in this as well.
Matt, was this budgeted for this year?
Yes.
That's what I thought, so it's already in the budget.
If I could elaborate just a little further than budgeted, since we're talking about a capital fund, money has been saved up for this purpose. So in addition to the expense being anticipated this year, in previous years, we had made deposits for the fund for that purpose. So it's not like an appropriation in the general fund where the end of the year it goes away. We will still have $400,000 in the account in 2020 for this purpose. The question is, you know, when is the board comfortable in, you know, in the growth of the township that this is now a needed amenity in our complex?
Right. Supervisor Winters, I cut you off, what were you gonna say?
I think I'd actually agree with Kyle, I think that we should, I'd like to wait for the Budget Committee, October's invitation to see what they have to say about the, the timing and the budget and everything else.
All right, so we'll table this till, that would be the, I guess the next meeting would be the morning session 'cause that would probably pass the evening-
It would, I think it's October 14th.
Right, actually, the timing is wonderful because you will receive a preliminary view of the, of the, of the budget at your November work session.
Okay, all right, so, so let's table that to the morning session then. And there was, I thought there was something else that might have had to be tabled, but I could be wrong right now. If I think of it, I'll bring it back up, but, so let's, let's table that then for the, for the morning session meeting, which I guess would be the first couple of days in November. And then I guess we'll turn it over to the Police Chief.
Good evening, everyone. For the board, I'm gonna jump around on my report a little bit tonight because of an approval I also need. The Police Department went through our re-accreditation inspection by the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Assessors on Friday, September 6th. I am very happy to report that we received a letter from the P.A. Chiefs Association this past week that we had passed the accreditation inspection, and we have been re-accredited for another three years. Myself, Lieutenant Yankanich and Officer Kyle Harnish will be attending the next quarterly Poliak meeting in Harrisburg on Thursday, November 21st, 2019, to receive our formal accreditation certificate. We will bring that with us to the Board of Supervisors meeting later that same evening. I also wanna note to you that we will be presenting 20 year pins to four officers that night also. Many thanks to the men and women on the Police Department for their hard work, and particularly to Lieutenant Yankanich and Officer Harnish, who are the key people in our accreditation process. Accreditation is an extremely difficult thing to accomplish in Pennsylvania. There are 1,600 police agencies in the state of Pennsylvania, and there are 117 accredited agencies. So for us to be accredited, and, and just, it's, it's an enormous accomplishment, but also is a huge statement to the residents of our township that we take our jobs very seriously, we wanna be the most professional officers we can be for our residents, and that we promise to you that we will do the best job that we can and be as transparent as we can in the performance of our duties. So I congratulate the Police Department and thank Jeff and thank Officer Harnish for all the hard work that they've done over the last three years. Number three, congratulations go out to Officer Kyle Harnish and his wife Lauren on the birth of their daughter Olivia. Mom and daughter are doing great, Kyle could probably use some more sleep. Recorded incidents for the month, we had 2,233 recorded incidents, we had 207 investigations. The department had nine criminal arrests, zero summary arrests. We had four warrant arrests, we completed one juvenile petition. We investigated eight traffic accidents, there were 157 traffic citations issued, 61 traffic warnings issued, and officers logged 10,015 miles of patrol. Training completed for the month, Lieutenant Jeff Yankanich completed internal affairs investigations, complaint and procedural responsibilities. Officer Bo Shepherd and Officer Juan Lemus completed criminal drug interdiction training. Correspondences from the month, you have a copy of the Poliak letter, and there's a copy of a thank you letter from a resident to Officer James Ferraro, Officer Bo Shepherd. I wanna jump back now to item number two. The Police Department has received its final approval from the Bureau of Justice Assistance and the P.A. Commission of Crime and Delinquency to implement our body worn camera program. The grant application process and our body worn camera policy development has been ongoing since late 2018. The Police Department presently utilizes mobile video recording systems in the police vehicles. The body worn cameras will complement the mobile video systems by recording officer interactions once they leave the confines of the police vehicle. Either recording system can be used separately or together. In cases that both mobile and body worn camera recordings exist, those files can be downloaded and merged into one digital evidence file. We anticipate that purchase, training, and implementation of the body worn cameras to be completed by the end of the year. With that being said, the, the quote for the body worn cameras was a quote from WatchGuard. WatchGuard is a proprietary system, they are the system that you have previously approved to be installed in the vehicles. So the body worn cameras that we are purchasing complement the in-car systems and are the only system that can work with the mobile system. The quote is for a total of $27,100. This quote was submitted with the grant package in 2018 when we made application. I updated this quote on Monday, and there's been no changes to it. So my request tonight is permission to make the purchase of our body worn cameras for the total of $27,100 that will be coming out of the Police Capital Reserve, and the grant will be refunding 50% of that amount back to the Capital Reserve once I file the paperwork.
That was your last item, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any questions on that, Supervisor Winters?
No, I do not have any questions.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the purchase of the body worn camera system in the amount of $27,100.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, Fire Department.
Good evening. The monthly report for the East Brandywine Fire Department is as follows. We had 78 total incidents for the month, 25 fire incidents, 53 medical. In East Brandywine Township, we had eight fire calls, we had 16 medical calls. We had four, three training sessions, with a total of 24 people in attendance at each one. The fall time for East Brandywine Fire Company becomes a very busy time because it happens to be Fire Prevention Week, October 6th to the 12th. Like to invite everybody to our Fire Department Open House, which is always well-attended, on October 16th. We have the bonfire that we put together and stand by with Brandywine Wallace Elementary School on October 18th. Throughout the week of fire prevention, we'll be visiting three elementary schools and two preschools for our fire prevention program. And once again, we're very, very fortunate at East Brandywine. Just last Wednesday, we had four additional new members voted into membership. And last night at our training session, we had a gentleman from Corner Catch Road come in and also fill out an application to apply for membership, so-
Great.
Still, still, still bringing them in, going back to my gear comments.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna turn it back over to Scott for the old business.
Okay. In your packets, you have the updated employee manual that Mike O'Gally provided earlier this year. I made my comments, I think Luke's comments, you did have your comments into this, correct?
Yeah, it began with our old manual, and then, if you'll recall, some time ago, we had an intern who worked on this project. Brian did a superb job. I had some feedback, and then it went to Mr. Gally, and then it came back for Mr. Gally, and now it has Luke's and Scott's comments, and we're still soliciting more.
Real quick, where are your comments?
I don't think you have the draft that shows the comments.
'Cause that's what I would like to do, I'd like to go through, obviously, it's gonna take some time, but I'd like to go through, if you guys can, I did see Supervisor Fisher's. Now, I haven't had a chance to go through it, I was, I was out of town, but I would like to see his and, and obviously, Mr. Winters, if he has any, but, and then I'll- if he has any, but, um, and then I'll give mine as well, uh, but I don't see yours here, so if you could get me a...
What's in your packet is, is, uh, shall we say, post, uh, Mr. Ga- Mr. Gally, and then Scott and Luke's feedback. So, ours is already incorporated in there, it doesn't show up as, as, like a track changes function in, in Word.
Alright, so that's what I would like to see, if we could go back to, so that, it's gonna save me a lot of reading, because I, I would have to read through every, every phrase and then track in yours, uh, out or in, so, so if you can give me your, your tracks, um, and, and I'll go back to my original copy, so I'm, I'm not double reading things.
So, you're gonna do that, right?
I, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, and I, and we would do this, I'm assuming, oh, that's what I was gonna suggest, the other, the other action item for the, for the morning session meeting, that, I mean, if you, it would take me no more than a couple of days to read through everybody's, um, right now, I have Supervisor Fisher's, and then if I could have yours and Scott's, and then, and then Jason's, and then I'd have mine, and I'd have everything back to everybody probably a week and a half ahead of time.
Okay.
Jason, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
You, you, would you be able to get your comments in by next week, too?
Uh, yes, I will.
Okay. So let's say, uh, let's say by the 1st of October, then, and then, um, that would give us... Yeah, does that work?
Yeah, I, I will roll it back to as it was received from Mr. Gally, and then I will track everyone's comments that I receive in the interim, and get that documented here.
Alright, thank you. And, um, alright, so now we're gonna go on to new business for the 2019 Minimum Municipal Obligations Pension Plan Calculations, uh, that's gonna be Scott again.
Yep, um, the, the requirements of the, uh, Pennsyl- of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for pension plans require that the Chief Financial Officer, which is me, uh, provide to the Board of Supervisors the next year's minimum municipal obligation worksheet, and before you, this is more or less a formality, but it's based on the current, uh, salaries, and with the police longevity and shift differential are included in that, and then the calculation at the, at the bottom, number 10, shows what the MMO or the minis- Minimum Municipal Obligation is, same thing for the, uh, the, uh, Non-Uniform Pension Plan, the only thing this didn't, uh, show, for some reason, the calculation didn't work for number nine, uh, for the MMO, with the, uh, the MMO is actually 78,394 for the non-uniform pension. So that's supposed to be in a public meeting, hence the purpose of this short presentation. Any questions? And the MMO is required for, uh, planning purposes, budget planning purposes, and, uh, we can't count on state aid, which we usually get each year, uh, but we can't count on that to do this calculation.
Supervisor, uh, Winters, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Alright, so now you guys have been sitting here so patiently, I apologize it's taken this long, but we're gonna go on to subdivision and zoning applications for 21 Harner Court zoning hearing application, um, and it would be Mike Nellio and Donald Bauer, is that right? And we're gonna blow it up on our screen here, so we'll see it, and you guys can see it on the monitor above us, and...
The only thing I'll start off is, that is the wrong plan.
Wrong.
So...
It's the original plan.
It's the original.
Originally that was submitted, and then when they went in front of the, uh, what the Board of Commissioners, I forget?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, I'm sorry, I, I unfortunately couldn't make that meeting. Uh, they suggested some things, and we made some revisions, and this is the revised plan.
I have copies, or I have the e-copy?
So, let's, we'll, we, we just want to state, Jason, we may lose you if we convert this over, if we do, could you please try calling back in?
He can hear us, but we can no longer hear him, as of right now, we just switched the feeds, so. I hope he's okay with that. He can text me if we have a concern.
Yeah, there you go, Jason, you can text Luke if you have an issue, uh, but right now, what we're gonna do is, uh, the technology is not quite up to par right this second, we're gonna go ahead and, and change over to the, uh, to the monitor.
Well, maybe, it will not zoom again.
I mean, I have an e-copy, do you want that? I don't know if you can load it up there.
It should be what's in your packets.
The e-copy.
One in the packet says 8:14.
But I also have, like, eight copies.
This is the, the copy that we have.
It's the one that says... This, is it the one that says, "Address zoning officers' comments"?
No, he said that's the wrong one, that's what I have.
What's this about, the report?
Hold on one second.
Well, it's not gonna help us even if they email it to us, because, uh, it would help us on our screen, but not on the big picture anyway, right?
Once, once we get it on that computer, I can project it. I just sent it to you, so. Okay, thank you.
No, I don't mind, I thought it was in this file.
The old days of the easel, which is...
Terrible, blank the screen, please.
Oogie.
Will you, will you blank screenshot, just in case I've got an email in here that, uh, is in some way privileged?
Oh, it says that it's blanked, it just did. That's, looks like what they've sent me.
I was doing this on the computer the other day, just moving fast through, um, through our, um, frontier airlines, and it's not being, it said, it said, "You're moving at superhuman speed, you must be a robot."
I also have the, uh, letter that they asked, do you guys want the letter? Is that for this meeting, next meeting?
That's the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. I was all rushed getting it signed, but I have it.
That's for the zoning hearing.
Okay, got it.
Is that the batteries you're thinking that?
Well, the controller in the closet has a problem communicating with this.
Oh, here, it came on.
Yeah.
Well, well, you can see it on our screen now, right? This is the right one?
Yeah, I would like the applicant to confirm that I've got the right one on the screen, though.
No, I think that's the original one.
What, are you trying to expand our screen with your fingers like it's a iPhone?
Right. How come it's not an iPad? Can you just explain what is different?
Yeah, the set, the setbacks are a little bit different.
Yeah, just explain what's different.
There were, there were three things that were changed from the original plan.
Right, just to use this one and explain it.
Do they need a copy of that? Is that the...
No, that's the wrong one.
No, it...
Too small, you can't see anything.
Yeah, you can, you can expand it.
Oh, can you make it bigger? There we go.
Oh, that's alright.
That was the same one.
That's the one.
Alright. Alright, we're on the, yes, we're good.
Is that the good one? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's one, oh, and then the other problem.
Just needed to warm up.
You wanna explain? You wanna explain? You explain? Yeah, I mean, I can tell them the three things.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
I was trying to see what the difference was between the, uh...
Do we go ahead?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the three items that have changed is, and this was based from the, the planning, uh, meeting that was done, we originally had rear of the pool at 5.1 feet from the rear property line, and through that meeting, it was suggested that we try and move that further away, uh, I think their number was actually 10.
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10, it was. Um, we got it to eight feet, so it's at eight feet now, so we moved it two foot, 11 inches from the original plan. By doing that, though, the edge of the pool, the pool structure, has moved closer to the, uh, structure of the house. Now, there is a letter that Scott, um, put out, or an email that Scott put out in reference to a conversation with Jeff Cantlin, uh, it's not a zoning ordinance or a building code that a pool be 10 foot from a house structure, it's kind of an internal policy, if I'm describing it best, and that's kinda how it is with most townships, because I've been up against this before in front of zoning hearing boards, so it's not a zoning ordinance, and Jeff's response to it was, as long as we could get a, uh, proof sealed engineered letter from an en- a structural engineer that said it could be closer than the 10 feet, my understanding is the township was fine with that.
That's correct.
And what about, um, only other thing I was thinking of is if the pool were to flood and it were to, uh, or, or, uh, puncture underground somehow, would that be able to then in turn, uh, flood the basement of the home or, or the house, uh, proper?
I mean, is it a possibility? I mean, it's a concrete, steel reinforced concrete shell with marbleized plaster finish, I don't know if they've ever punctured, uh, you know, in that sense, is it possible for the pool to overflow? It, it, very, very, very rare occasion for that to happen, the homeowner has the ability to withdraw water from the pool through the filtering system. Um, I'm not sure if 10 feet, or eight feet, or seven feet from the house would make a huge difference in that. I don't know if you have a basement?
I do.
He does have a basement. Didn't know whether he did or not.
Yep.
Um, we have, we have an internal policy as a pool company that's been building pools for many, many years, and we will go as close as five foot to a structural foundation of a basement, but then we know that some townships, uh, have some, what of a setback to a structure that's more than what ours is, so we generally abide by that, um, unless we can provide a letter that says it's safe, and our structural engineer, um, has reviewed this plan, uh, in detail, and has provided us a letter stating that he would approve the bu- the pool to be as close as five foot to the foundation of this house. We have it at seven, um, to try and fit this pool in, so we're not even going to the five, uh, we have it at seven foot itself. That was the second change, so the eight, the five feet from the rear property line to eight, the seven from the house instead of 10, and the third is, the pool is, not a huge one, is approximately about 25 square foot smaller than that plan, so it was reduced a little bit in size. Currently, this pool is, um, at...
475.
475 square foot, we originally had 500 square foot. In this industry, in this area, which I've been working for 25 years, I've done many pools in East Brandywine over 25 years, average pool is probably about 600 square foot, we do some smaller, we do some bigger, but 600 is, 600 square foot of water surface area is approximately the average sized pool, so we're a little under that at 475.
And then the other ch- two changes that Mike may not notice is the left side of the pool, I think went from 29 feet to 32 and a half from the original plan, and then we also flipped the steps to go sideways against the house, so it wasn't like three foot or four foot to the, to the pool edge.
The deck and stairs note there, they are not, they're not existing right now, they're proposed, off, coming off of the house. There's nothing there right now.
And then the five foot metal fence was updated as well, because the last, the original plan had four instead of five.
Alright, and so, um, the last item that I, I'm just trying to get my bearings here, you do not currently have a deck or a patio back there?
No, there's another application in on that, but we put that on hold, because going this way was too close to the pool, and we wanted to wait to see how this was gonna turn out.
And what's that gonna do to your stormwater management, uh, for your MPDS?
We're under the 1,000 square feet.
With, with the pool and the patio, both?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, from an, an overall lot impervious, for this particular development, we're, we're under that, the lot requirement, and we're also under the Stormwater Management Regulation of 1,000 square foot.
Is there a reason the pool can't be moved closer to Nichols Mine Road? I mean, the, the pool setback requirement is 25 feet. And you could get more than 18 and a half feet on the south side, I think it is, south side, right?
I think the problem we run into, we've even reshaped the pool closer to the house, is where the morning room is, the more you move it to the left, you get closer than seven feet to that corner. And we're trying to keep the seven feet, you know?
Without, without making the pool smaller. Our shortest distance in this backyard, unfortunately, is where, from that morning room to the rear property line, you have, uh, 26.9 feet, um, is the shortest distance. So the further you go with the pool behind the morning room, the smaller of the width that pool has to be, uh, in a sense of, he's trying to keep that minimal from that aspect, so that the pool doesn't have to be a 10 foot width or 11 foot width, because that's what ends up happening if you pull behind the morning room any further. That, that was the reasoning.
Nobody wants a rectangular pool, I guess, right?
Well, we, we drew it, and it just doesn't, it doesn't look right. It's still like a 10 foot on that side, and it just doesn't, it doesn't look right, it looks hideous, in my opinion, as far as the way it would shape, it wasn't rectangle, it was like an obtuse, I don't even know, it was a weird shape, right, Mike? Remember?
Yeah, it was like a lazy, lazy hour rectangle, but still, even saying, with 26.9 feet there, whether it's a rectangle or rounder, if we're eight foot off of the rear and seven off the house, that's 15, that leaves a, um, 11.9 of width for the pool, using those numbers. Typical, typical pool is at least 14, 15 foot wide.
If you just slide this over.
Yeah, it was 29 something. 18.18, 18.8, it was only like .3, .3. But I think if you do that, and you rotate this up, this goes back to five feet, and it just, it doesn't...
One of the other modifications we're making to the design, too, if you notice, and you can see it on your plan, there's a shaded area of the pool wall there with no patio behind it, because that's the closest point to the property line, although the township regulation is to water's edge, not to patio, is that 25 foot setback, you still compromised here in a sense of adding a little cost to the project, and not doing patio back there, but there's a grade difference, so raising the structure of the wall of the pool, so the pool's gonna actually be an exposed wall there on the backside, so that we don't have to change the grade or minimize the grade to the property line, being that's where we're gonna be the closest. That's not typically done on a lot of projects, unless a customer wants that, or they're doing an infinity edge, or a negative edge, or something in that aspect. We did it for about a 25 foot stretch there, to keep that grade between the pool and the property line, which is the eight feet, the same, it's not gonna change, for not building up and having to slope back to the property line there.
No, I don't have any questions, um, I'm just gonna say that, um, we, um, we, we have these developments within the township with very small lots, and I don't think it was ever contemplated when we did this zoning, that people... and I don't think it was ever contemplated when we did this zoning that people were gonna fill up the back, little backyard that they had with a pool of this size, and so I don't, I personally don't see what the hardship is that justifies a variance. It's not, I'm usually not opposed to variances when they're de minimis, even if it's, even if there is no real hardship, but I don't see this as being de minimis, so I certainly wouldn't be in support of granting a variance for this.
And it would go to the zoning anyway, right?
I know, but the question is, do we, do we put our stamp of approval on it, and I'm certainly not in a position to do that.
The facts that I see that just concern me, be that it is May, you will go to the zoning hearing, but if a deck were to be constructed near the outer edge, I get very concerned with kids jumping off of the deck into the pool, as well as I get very concerned with little kids being so close to the house structure, running around and tripping and falling into the pool. So that being said, that's my biggest concerns right now, is safety, as opposed to the hydrostatic pressure of that pool being so close to the house. If their engineer's willing to sign off on it, those are my three big concerns, but again, you know, you'll have the zoning board for their input, but...
Yeah. Well, the deck, it's not really a deck, it's a four-by-five landing with steps. It's just to get down to grade, right off the slider door, it's not...
But you know where I'm going with this?
Yeah, I got it.
You know, and it may be, you know, not the little, little ones, but the teenagers that think it's funny, but knowing many a people who have had problems with that, that concerns me, but that's my concerns, and it's, you know, heed my warning, that's it.
Right, and that's the thing, is we can push the pool back, but then we get to the five feet of the property line. So is it eight feet, is it five feet? Like, what's the better option to go to the board, so that we have...
Well, for me personally, it's a safety standpoint. A safety standpoint of five feet closer to a neighboring property doesn't concern me as much as someone being able to jump off of the deck stair right into a pool, so, but that being said, if it's still within jumpable distance, I don't think you're gonna change it whether it's five feet, eight feet, or ten feet, you know? Someone's always gonna try. So you know your property better than I, that would be, you know...
Intent is the township policy.
For closest to the house.
Correct.
Yeah, and I would have to assume that that has a safety aspect in mind, but as I was also saying, with the hydrostatic pressure, when you have two substrate, you have a pool and a house pushing down on the soil around a house, something's gotta give. You can't have that much weight, and I would assume that would be the second reason why there's a required distance, but...
That's why we have structural engineers.
Yep, exactly. So...
I will say that this, and I know that each case is different, and each, I've been doing this long enough, there's a development, I get the name of it, it's, one of the streets is Waring Road, W-A-R-I-N.
Yeah, that's Keats Glen.
Right, similar development, I think, in the size of lots.
Yeah.
Older development, I think, back in the early two thousands that was built, maybe, right?
Two thousand, it started in two thousand one.
We've done, we did three pools in there under the same situation. I know it was many years ago, but obviously, same process, same situation.
And there's another one coming.
Yes, that's mine.
I know, we just got it.
And of course, that's something maybe the board wants to consider, and perhaps you've already thought of it, and I've seen this in other municipalities, you're likely to see other applications like this in this development.
Yeah, and that's the thing, you open up Pandora's box. If you, if you cut corners for, for one, then the next person is a foot closer or something like that. Now, again, this is a zoning requirement, too, so, so, you know, there will be, there'll be that hearing as well.
Well, in a lot of, a lot of situations with a lot of developments, when the zoning is changed for a development like this, not to get off on a soapbox, but sometimes the township, and I'm saying this one in general, that zoning changes for all other items also. In some cases, it doesn't. A pool's twenty-five feet in East Brandywine, regardless of where you're building the pool. Sometimes the house is closer to the property line than a pool at twenty-five feet.
Right.
So, not saying it makes sense, but when developments like this are approved with, these aren't townhomes, these aren't condos, these are decent-sized residential homes, which are most likely gonna get families, which in most cases, a lot of them want extra items in the sense of the pool itself, so it becomes very challenging.
Yeah, and I will agree with you. I don't think it's unwarranted for a person asked to put a pool on their property. I think everybody should have, you know, that option, so, but, you know, but again, you'll go to the zoning and we'll go from there, I guess.
Well, and your practice has been either a motion to support it, a motion to oppose it, a motion to support it with conditions, or it could be a motion to stay neutral.
Yeah, I think at this point, with Supervisor Winters not being here, Jason, you're not here, are you?
Yeah, I'm on.
Oh, you are. I'm of a position to stay neutral at this point. Supervisor Fisher is in a position that he's not in favor. I'll give you the final word.
Well, I think, based on what I've heard, and really not, I'd be better about there, but I'd stay neutral on this, and let the zoning hearing board decide.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Does a report get written that goes to the zoning hearing board from you guys, or not?
They are their own entity.
They get our minutes.
They'll get our minutes if they should, yeah, right.
Same with the planning commission?
Yeah, there's an X...
Go in front of the zoning hearing board, they have minutes from both of these meetings.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna...
Well, I think we already announced it, didn't we?
We may be announced at the last.
Yeah.
Just to cover all bases, we did have an executive session following the last Township Supervisors meeting. Public comment on agenda items. Seeing none? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.